She was a valued employee and a valued friend of Lake Ridge Tech School. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting into order. We will start with the mission statement.
I am honored to be here in my empowering role. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republican Party. I am here on behalf of the people of this world, in this world.
This is a regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees of the Lake Ridge Tech School, Lake County, Indiana, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, at six P M. in the Lake Ridge School Board Meeting Room. Let the record show that all the board members and the superintendent are present. Let the record show the administrators that are present. Consider the attached accounts payable vouchers and the January seventeenth, twenty twenty five payroll for payment. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Buckley. May I have a second? Motion by Ms. Need. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Uh, four ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Then we're gonna move on to consider the minutes of the January thirteenth, twenty twenty five school board meeting. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Needs. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Buckley. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Mr. Woltersen will provide a board of finance presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Charlie, members of the board, members of the audience. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Adrian Woltersen, uh, Business Manager and CFO of Lake Ridge Schools. On the purpose of tonight's, uh, presentation is two-fold. One is the annual presentation of the... I don't think... Anyway. One is the annual presentation of the fiscal quality indicators from the distressed unit appeals board that we are required by statute to present. And then the second is the board of finance presentation regarding annual, uh, financial health of the district. As usual, I have a caveat on the, uh, fiscal quality indicators provided by the distressed unit appeals board, and that they are one year behind. Um, so as you'll notice, let's see if I can make it bigger. That's most... The numbers, uh, on page one regarding, uh, fall student counts, uh, are from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as opposed to twenty-four. As we can see from the first indicator, which is average daily membership, um, the twenty-three, twenty-four school count, um, in September, which is now annually in October, was one thousand five hundred and fifty. Uh, this past October, it was one thousand five hundred and seventy-one. So we are actually on the upswing on that, uh, indicator. Additionally, the twenty-twenty-four N S S value was two hundred and ninety-nine million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. That is also increased, uh, in twenty-twenty, uh, for the twenty-twenty-five tax, uh, tax year, uh, which I'll cover in the presentation, uh, put the book to the board of finance. So the next indicator is a demographic one for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, Lake Ridge Schools had almost over ninety per... Over ninety percent of pre and reduced lunch, uh, enrollment in their student count and slightly under twenty percent special education and a little under ten percent in, uh, English language learning, uh, students. Next indicator are the fund balances. Uh, these are indicated by major funds that school tracks, uh, between our debt funds, our education fund, federal grant funds, uh, rainy day funds, operational funds, self-insurance funds, state funds. As you can see from the indicator, in twenty-twenty-three, um, I don't wanna alarm anybody, but that large, uh, that large deficit there was for unreversed federal stimulus funds. So those were S R funds that we did not yet, uh, have reversed from the federal government's, uh, which we have done in twenty-twenty-four, which I'll go over in the board of finance presentation. Everything else is as a relatively, uh, relatively robust surplus for us, for instance, uh, local fund, the education fund, and also... Next indicator is the twenty-twenty-three, uh, expenditure and revenue, uh, surplus and fund balance and surplus deficit. As you can see, in twenty-twenty-three, our revenue just did out, uh, outstrip our expenses. So we were able to have a small surplus um, as opposed to a couple of years where we were running in the negative, uh, those of unreversed grant funding, um, and extra expenditure. Uh, the next indicator is fund balance as a percent of your expenditures. You always wanna have, so fund balance are your cash, your reserves in particular funds. So, um, in this space, this is measuring our major funds, our, uh, education fund and our operations fund. So how much money is in the fund balance compared to our usual expenditures. Um, we'd like to keep it above fifty percent, and as you can see, um, we have done so, um, in twenty-twenty-three, um, twenty-twenty-four. It's starting to get a little more challenging, but we have managed to still stay above the line, and we'll talk about that during a second. The last two indicators are revenue by type. And I want to point out this graph particularly, this little pink area right, uh, pink or purple area right here. Um, the kind of peaks, you know, starts in twenty-twenty-one, peaks in twenty-twenty-three. That is federal stimulus, stimulus funding. So that little peak right there is about to go away. And so you can see that without that area, revenue, you know, revenue is kind of leveled out. There's a little bit of a dip in twenty-twenty-two, uh, enrollment, but for the most part, it's, uh, it's leveled out. And then lastly, as if to rub it in, uh, do we have to specifically indicate how much revenue is from operating revenue around them? And that is, of course, if they're around zero dollars, it's zero percent. So like I said, these are twenty-twenty-three numbers. I don't wanna dwell on them too much, um, but before I move on to, uh, board of finance presentation, do you have any questions, uh, regarding these indicators?
No, but I do want to make fun of the board member of how the different funds work, kind of identify what the funds are. I'm not sure if everybody understands that there are different types of money for different things.
So, uh, I was gonna touch on that. So first, I'll start with a couple of financial highlights from twenty-twenty-four. First, uh, Metasys property value increased in the district by fifteen point three million dollars, over four point eight percent. Um, this has been a positive trend over the last, uh, three years especially, where, um, property values in the district have grown. Um, the first couple of years, they were like seven, ten percent. Um, the growth has slowed down, um, you know, fifteen point three million dollars, of course, is nothing to sneeze at, um, but, um, as a property value increase slows down, we have to be careful that, um, especially with the General Assembly sort of legislating around property tax relief, uh, adjusting property tax collections, deduction, et cetera, that we don't, uh, that we don't go too far in the paint as far as, you know, providing relief because those property values may, uh, return the hood. And then if they return the hood, then we're back into a situation where we have flat or negative growth. And, um, just to, just to, uh, reassure or instruct everyone, uh, Lake Ridge Schools revenue comes from two places mainly. Um, so mainly it comes from the General Assembly through the collection of sales tax. Um, that funds the education fund, which is normally used for instructional expenses. Um, and then also, uh, local property taxes are used to fund the operations fund, which is essentially everything else, uh, construction, buses, utilities, uh, property insurance, things for the operational nature. I've always been in the mind that pretty much everything we do around here is untied together. Um, so we need heat to instruct students, we need lights on to start students, the buses to bring students to school. But that's how the state has pretty, pretty much divided, um, the categories of budgeting expense. Now additionally, we have a couple of, uh, different pots as far as when we have some excess cash, we can move it to a rainy day fund. Um, you know, and past that we had excess, you can move about ten percent of your excess cash into a rainy day fund. Don't exactly what it says it is, um, so if a roof fails, uh, boiler blows up, if you need to repay something that, you know, you're not anticipating. And also it's for cases of years where, you know, property tax collection is not as strong or red, you know, you're only, you know, didn't vote as much as you wanted to. And then also, um, we have a self-insurance fund. So the self-insurance fund is exactly what you think it is. It is, um, the employees paying their own insurance premium. Lake Ridge Schools also pays a portion of that premium into a pot that, um, for, uh, for that whole thing. And then additionally, um, there are several grants available, um, either from the federal governments or the state governments. The biggest ones, um, Mr. John, Mr. Regan Johnson, uh, he presents, can talk, he can talk about those. Our Title One, uh, which is instructional support, uh, community engagement. Um, there's a part in there for homeless students, English language parents, et cetera. Um, and there's Title Two, Title Four. Those are mainly to support educators, uh, professional developments. Uh, also for, uh, increasing teacher compensation, uh, supplement that, et cetera. And we also have a couple of smaller counseling grants, uh, special purpose grants for, uh, for instance, a couple of years ago, we had one to, uh, redo some, uh, light, lighting, uh, portable lighting rigs, things like that. So those are kind of the mini buckets of Lake Ridge. Mainly, when I come up here and talk about the governments and collections and whatnot, we're talking mainly about the operations fund, the education fund, and then, uh, also some smaller degree, what they call a debt service fund. Debt service fund is money issued in bonds, construction mainly, um, and we'll talk about that during a few minutes. So as I kind of alluded to previously, enrollment increased by twenty-one students from September of twenty-three to October of twenty-four, which went to basically, the brand revenue grew of six hundred and ninety-one thousand or five point three percent in twenty-twenty-four. On the upside, education fund expenses rose by, uh, about one point one six million dollars or nine point four percent. Uh, relations fund expenses rose by three hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-six or four point seven percent. All-staff salary spend has increased by one point three six five million or eleven point one percent. The social expenses increased five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, three point three percent. Transportation expenses held steady, one point six million annual for them as, as we moved transportation, uh, resources in-house. And that's been kind of a mixed bag as far as service levels, but expenditure-wise, it's been a wash. Um, the S R secured entry projects are substantially complete. I'm sure Ms. Reddick can talk about the changes in her building. Uh, Mr. Bobakovich, uh, his building's almost done as far as that goes. Uh, it just, if, I think when those, uh, those projects are done, we will have three, um, modernized entries for schools. So, um, we have, you know, uh, essentially a two-door entrance system. We have, uh, cameras and a reactor system. The reactor system is, if you don't know, it's where you feed your, um, I D. into the machine where it detects you against, uh, a sex offender or a criminal registration database. And of course, if you play it, then it will warn the authorities. So as far as, you know, same entrance, I think we've done probably as good as we can as far as, you know, getting our entrances, you know, quote-unquote, hardened. So next is the auditorium build-out project. Uh, I'm gonna show you some pictures here toward the end. Uh, we are really digging into the meat of that project now. Uh, wouldn't recognize the auditorium and, you know, we put on a hard hat and went in there. It's essentially, um, a over shell of itself. Uh, so, uh, we are in the middle of that project. Uh, as soon as winter sports are done, uh, the auditorium is getting to the same. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. I have so many projects going on at the same time. Do you remember? Uh, property tax revenues in the operations fund increased by two hundred and eighty-two thousand or twenty-three point two percent. Again, that's because of that increased assessed value. So if our assessed value continues to grow, we will continue to see, you know, more revenue in the operations fund property tax and also our circuit breaker, our property tax cap, uh, negative effects will increase. Unfortunately, projections don't really bear that out, and I'll show that to you here in a second. Um, insurance expenses, property land building, workforce compensation were down forty-four point five percent, or two hundred and twenty-seven, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. That was solely as a result of us going out and getting dependent bids for insurance. For several years, we've been a dirty usual. The prices continued to grow, go well. And eventually we got to the point where we're getting half a million dollars a year in property, that was top. And so of course, we said that was, that was way too much. So now, you know, unfortunately, it's starting to pipe back up, um, and I think in your agenda tonight, um, you know, our collective earlier is gonna give us an eight percent increase. But that's just the market, you know, the price of everything. I think if you go on the news, you can see several articles about property insurance that's just gone crazy. I mean, there's some states where they won't carry it at all. So... Utilities expenses increased by fifteen point nine percent and U S C O. Uh, trash collection, uh, decreased by thirty point seven percent, um, twenty thousand eight hundred dollars. And again, was being a good, the trash contract. And then technology spending increased by twenty-one percent, uh, forty-two thousand for eighteen. Uh, I think that is, uh, testament to our technology department, uh, kind of keeping track of, uh, student device usage, kind of triaging where we can, uh, using old devices to supplement broken devices. So kudos to them. But all that is to say, for reasons that all continue to illustrate, uh, the education operations fund transfer will exceed the fifteen percent threshold provided by the state, uh, for the big screen here. So do we have will continue to, uh, check out. So the next slide illustrates that growth and assessed value, especially since twenty-twenty-two. Um, as you can see historically, um, in Lake Ridge, the Lake Ridge area, uh, we kind of have a flat, uh, flat revenue of about, uh, assessed value of about two hundred and sixty million dollars a year. So growth is great, but eventually it will level out. Um, it's one level, it, how much it's going to be when it levels out is, I'm, a big question. Um, you know, is twenty-twenty-six gonna be another year of growth? Um, is three hundred and fourteen kind of top the mark? Um, that, that hurts a little more, a little more necklace. Again, this slide just kind of breaks down what our, uh, what the property in our district is. Sixty-five percent of it is residential, twenty-three percent commercial, and then twelve percent personal property. Now, the twelve percent personal property is worth noting because a couple of the bills in the General Assembly this year is looking to do away with pers- personal property taxes. So if you take, you know, that twelve percent, you know, part of the pie, and, you know, when we collect, you know, our, uh, 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 maximum levy in the Indian Union is about eight million dollars. If you take twelve percent out of that, you know, you're talking nearly, you know, a million dollars worth of, you know, property taxes that are gonna be replaced somehow. And then again, always our friend circuit breaker loss. Circuit breaker is the amount of credits that, uh, property tax, uh, property owners receive when their property, uh, uh, the N S S value is above three percent, two percent, or one percent. Uh, depending, you know, so, uh, commercial prop, sorry, commercial property is three percent of assessed value. So anything above, any taxes above that are essentially credited to the owner. Two percent is for rental and agricultural property, and one percent is for residential property. And that's after, uh, all, uh, deductions, exemptions, credits, et cetera. So I clean that part up. Well, I'll read that part up because again, in the General Assembly, one of the things that they're talking about for property tax relief is increasing, you know, the amount of the home state deduction, uh, maybe, you know, a hundred percentage, uh, increasing credits from sixty-five. Now, as property owners, all those are brief things. I mean, because, I mean, I, I'm a property owner and I look at my property bill. You know, you always set, you know, see, you don't know what the property tax rate is, what the credit's are. But at the end of the day, that's all revenue that's going to school districts, sewage, the library, uh, township offices, uh, town, you know, the town, the little bit of town. So that revenue either has to be replaced through other taxes, sales tax, excise tax, um, certain states or certain substances tax. Um, but in Indiana, the primary way that that is done is usually through, uh, taxpayer referendum. And that's just, again, I, I'm not going to advocate one way or another today, but those are the facts that, you know, either the assembly finds additional pots of money, either through additional taxation and will see, um, or, you know, reparations would be the way to go. So because of N S S value growth, if you notice a dip in twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, it went from three point three million loss to two point nine. Now, the Department of Local Government Finance, uh, for the state, uh, tax rates budget approval has estimated that this year, uh, the circuit breaker loss will be right around three million dollars. So, I mean, not bad. And so, so it's essentially saying that, you know, your, your assessed value growth will probably be relatively flat. So, you know, but it's not great either. I mean, so it's, it's, it's not positive growth. And then obviously you can kind of see twenty-six, twenty-seven to twenty-thirty. Now, all of these numbers are kind of predicated on, you know, one, two percent growth here. Um, so obviously, uh, there's bigger growth, those numbers change. If there's, you know, the, obviously, if property values fall, those numbers get bigger. But that's kind of what we need to plan. Next slide is a subject property tax collection. Uh, this one just sort of illustrates that between, uh, the two point nine million circuit breaker, we also had unselected property tax of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. This is just, you know, one reason the other, the property tax wasn't paid, either vacant property, people didn't pay it, whatever. That results that, you know, serve a levy of eight point two million dollars between two funds. Sorry, I'm down. That's eight point two million dollars. We're only collecting five point three million in taxes. And most of that is to service our debt. So pay our bonds, um, you know, which were the, uh, swimming pool renovation, football field renovation, and now the, uh, field house and art store. Um, as a result, um, in the future slide, we'll, we'll see that we're pretty leveraged on debt. So it's not like we can do debt. So most of our hits are gonna be to the operations fund. So that's what the next slide shows, that our debt is fairly constant in twenty thirty-five. And then it kind of falls off in twenty thirty-six. So we probably issue some debt in twenty thirty-six. Um, the problem is, is that's, you know, some of our buildings might date from thirty-six, but we just gotta pay that as a cost. Next slide just kind of shows the different, uh, bonds that we have. Yes, please.
So can you say why it's important that debt, I mean, to the same level when one falls off from the top?
So that actually brings up an excellent point that's usually, you want to continue to keep your debt rate as constant as possible so there's not a sticker shock to the taxpayer when you have issued new debt. Um, the problem with that logic is that there are some, uh, portions of the general assembly that think that we should let the debt service rate fall because that is a form of property. So it's, it's something that they don't have to press a lever on, is that, you know, as we pay off debts, then property taxes going down because we're not reissuing new debt. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And but a part of the challenge, and again, this is structural challenges from downstate that currently for debt service rate above eight cents, uh, per, you know, uh, eight cents per hundred, uh, assessed value. So in the past, all of that is what they, what they call, you know, addition or remonstrance, which is essentially, we had a hearing saying we want to issue new debt for, for instance, the fieldhouse and auditorium, which we did, you know, in twenty twenty two. Uh, if anybody had objections to that, they could have had a petition, and if there were enough signatures, then we would have had a hold of election. Well, the state changed it, so now that those kind of projects get above a certain, uh, debt service rate automatically in their elections. So that's another challenge. So again, it shows that the part of the thing I did not address are these common school loans. Common school loans are smaller loans from the, uh, the states. Uh, in the past, they were used to purchase things like computers, textbooks, um, things of that nature. Um, they're, they're, they're usually smaller in size, you know, no more than, you know, one, two million dollars at most. So you can't do things like, you know, repair, you know, entire buildings with, you know, accounts. You're buying laptops, you're buying, you know, a hand bus, things like that. And again, you can kind of see that the pay off dates vary between twenty twenty five for the smaller ones, up to twenty forty two for the, uh, auditorium, you know, house project. Next slide, this was the comparison, um, between our district and other, other districts in terms of assessed value, total levy, uh, circuit breaker, uh, and all this referendum status. Um, as you can kind of see, we are in, have a challenging spot. In that because of our lower assessed value, in order to levy, you know, the need to levy, our tax rate is currently two dollars and sixty two cents, one ninety nine. Other districts, you can kind of see that a lot of school districts have larger assessed values. You know, for instance, you know, Crown Point, you know, their assessed value is in the four point two billion dollar range. They can do a dollar twenty two. Like Central, six billion eighty cents. And that's everything. That's their, that's their operations fund, that's their operating referendum, that's their capital referendum, that's our debt service, that's the whole shooting match of, uh, property taxes. Challenge, again, is that the smaller you are, the poorer you are, you have to work twice as hard to raise funds. For instance, for a forest, you can kind of see their two dollars sixty six, it's higher than ours. But that's because they were able to pass an operating referendum of a dollar sixteen. And that was just, that was just so they could have any sort of operations fund at all. At the circuit rate, at that circuit rate of five hundred thousand dollars, that totally wipes out every forest's, uh, property tax, uh, collection in the operations. So that's one of the challenges there. And then you can kind of see, you know, widening schools, you know, then they're able to, I'm not gonna say they're grinding because they also went and recovered and failed, so they're like that, you know, some soul searching as well. But because their, you know, assessed values have a billion dollars, they're able to have an eighty cent tax. Again, this is just the, uh, history of our, uh, new moment. Um, that peaked in February of, uh, twenty nineteen and seventeen ninety six. Uh, currently, uh, as of October, uh, twenty four, we're at fifteen seventy one. Um, I think I talked with our data specialist, um, for the February count, we're probably looking around fifteen fifty. So we usually lose about twenty students from, uh, September until February or October, February. Um, I think I'd like to point out at the end is that a thousand of the, one thousand thirty one students delivered in the wars of Lake Ridge. Uh, so we went square miles of our school district. On the other five hundred and four, your transfer was in from other school districts. Um, Gary, Ammon, Chicago, Lake Station, et cetera. Um, that equals almost four point six million dollars in revenue to Lake Ridge schools. So that is, that is a substantial amount. I mean, that is essentially, that is more than a quarter of our education fund budget in a year. Um, similarly, um, we have a positive, uh, transfer rate because you can kind of see at the bottom that we lose a hundred and ninety four students delivered in the district that go to other schools, either vouchers, return to schools, et cetera. That is, uh, that costs the district about one point seven of the dollars. So at the end of the day, the district is still ahead because of how the district is holding. Now, obviously, you know, you need, you need, uh, a certain amount of students to support programs, uh, instructional programs, extracurricular programs, facilities, et cetera. So fifteen seventy one is a solid number. Um, I would certainly put it on a wall along the lines of the, you know, seventeen twenties of, you know, yesterday here. Uh, but, you know, importantly, more students also equals more expense, uh, more teachers, uh, more instructional capacity, et cetera. I'm trying to, uh, as in these next couple, just so I can, with good time, but also. So next one just shows the, uh, kind of, like, growth or lack of, of our basic grants. Between, uh, enrollment decline and the, uh, budgets downstate. If you kind of see, well, what kind of is lacking in basic grants? Um, just anywhere between thirteen and a half million, as low as twelve million in twenty, uh, twenty one, twenty two. Um, again, you know, the safety net would probably be more along the lines of over fourteen million dollars. But, you know, unfortunately, that's kind of not the reality we're basing it on. Kind of playing this one out as far as, you know, on deficit surplus. You can see that twenty twenty four, again, our, our revenue is slightly outstripper expenditures. But again, that number continues to drive and drive and drive. And because part of it is that federal funds are going away, so we're gonna have to either supplement the salary benefits for those positions that we, you know, kind of bring out of pandemic. Uh, the programs that we needed out of pandemic to address learning loss, uh, improve literacy. Uh, I've been all of a sudden, probably kind of thought about those programs here a little bit. And then, um, last year, the state came with, up with new, uh, high school, uh, graduation campaigns or skills or while they're in the culture, you might use its additional expenditure. It is things that school districts have to continue to track, report, uh, provide data to, you know, the DLE board. This takes money, this takes time, this takes people. And you have to see how the state is responding. Kind of flat. About two percent. Yeah, so two point, two percent's in both year, in, in year one and year two of the diagonal budget. And so, um, as you all kind of know, inflation is, inflation in some is more than that. So if, you know, inflation is four, five percent, um, you're kind of talking, you know, you're, you're, you're still thinking of that loss. And then additionally, we're talking on, you know, other things that, you know, we want to increase teacher compensation. We want to, uh, recognize the counselors and psychologists are also teachers. And I'm not, and I agree with all of that. I agree that teachers should be paid more. I agree that counselors and psychologists are necessary and didn't support for these kids, you know, not only out of the pandemic, but, you know, our student population. It's just when you have these announcements, it's, the next question is, okay, where is the money? And I'm telling you that's right now, this is the money that state of Indiana gives. So I guess the question that comes, okay, not one.
I actually are even told by the, the Senator House, where they're sorry, I didn't mention the whole few. He has been warned to me that it's going to be a very, I think, frustrating situation.
So, and again, you know, that's, I don't say that's certainly not fine. Um, but that's, those things have consequences. And so the consequences are now, okay, what are you, and this is a general, not the whole, not the community. This is more of a, like, you, what are you going to do? You know, um, are you going to reduce services? Are you going to, uh, you know, close buildings? Are you going to let the SPAC go? Are you going to, uh, try and raise funds? And again, I pointed out pretty much the main way that the state of Indiana says you need to raise funds. My final.
And that's what, that's not to get into. Didn't have, hey, I tried, I, our, our, that's why I'm before, we should still remember. I understand, they're giving the prize, if something you know, and you, you know, we are not able to function, but you need a school because once the school district goes, there goes the community. So people need to hear this loud and clear.
Can you speak a little bit about how the state, um, wants the mandatory minimum teacher salary and the impact that has as well?
Well, so depending on, and we need to wrap up. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna wrap up here. So depending on which bill you see, um, coming through the pipe, you know, either the state wants, um, the average to go up to sixty thousand dollars, or it wants the starting salary to go up to about fifty five, or it wants you to spend, you know, sixty five percent of your overall revenue on teacher salary benefits. So there are a lot of numbers for you on that. And we've done, and, you know, this, you know, it's not here to attest to it, but the last couple of contracts, we've done a fairly decent job increasing teacher compensation within the limits of our budget. The problem is, is that we are still lagging behind our school districts. Our average is still, you know, slightly lower average. Um, unfortunately, our mid-career teachers are the ones that are impacted the most by that. Because we've been kind of, you know, raising, beginning teacher pay, kind of concentrating on that, that people kind of suck in the middle, the only way that they feel that they can get away is to go somewhere else. And that causes continuity disruption, that hurts, you know, quality programming, et cetera. So I just kind of want to finish off with a couple of things. Um, this slide kind of shows that, you know, uh, basically, uh, we haven't been COVID response. We didn't see eleven point eight million dollars in, uh, relief funding. Uh, that allowed us, uh, you know, things that's, we are not, couldn't afford, which, you know, remote, uh, learning, uh, helps, uh, do new, uh, structural wards throughout the districts, kind of, uh, how bomb and the technical ramp, uh, the UCOP fund allowed us to do a, uh, global refresh, uh, without any, uh, expense in the district. Um, and then the other three, the KESR and SR three, um, that allowed us to have these supports, you know, the examinationists, help address learning loss, um, behavior issues from COVID, and then also, um, the security project. So I was setting it up as always I can. Well, things are always kind of rookie. Um, the state budget forecast, we kind of discussed about, you know, it's gonna be tight. Um, I don't know if two percent is the ceiling or the floor. Um, I know that the associations, uh, IED Pro, IED Center, ISBA, everyone is liking the states. Two percent is not, two percent, like I said, two percent is not even inflation. Problem is, the states also realize that they have about billion dollar hole in Medicaid that they need to plug. So that's, that's gonna be the challenge to watch. Inflation or COVID will cause financial pressure points during the next eighteen, twenty four months. So that just means, you know, things that we faced before COVID hits, um, circuit breaker loss, aging buildings, uh, plant enrollments, things of that nature. You know, we've been across reductions since twenty ten. I mean, so, you know, we have renegotiated contracts, closed buildings, purpose buildings. Uh, we've got, you know, we're pared down programs. Uh, so, you know, that's something that we continue to, can, can go. Continuous reevaluation services, like some, uh, savings, like that pointed out, we can't outrun, we can't outrun eight percent increases in insurance. We cannot run the fact that health insurance, you know, usually grow, grow between seven to ten percent a year. You know, we can't outrun the fact that, you know, uh, market forces, you know, continue to, uh, pressure us on sale. We can't cut anymore, folks. I mean, you know, we, we kind of, we, we, we kind of cut too far back from these, back in twenty eighteen. Um, you know, which led to kind of some problems that's kind of reared their head. You know, we always talk about bus service, eliminating it, that's always a weather we can pull. But I think, uh, folks, I always get like, Lake Station, so which one eliminated buses? Lake Station, thank you. So Lake Station, you know, they eliminated bus service. And then, you know, about six months later, they, you know, their voters said, can't do that. So it's not one of those things that you want to have to do. It's not one of those things that's, you don't want to threaten anybody that's, okay, we need to raise funds or we're gonna lose bus services. You don't want to threaten people saying, you know, we need to raise funds or we're not gonna have counselors anymore. But unfortunately, again, the realities we face, that districts are all over, you know, not, not just, you know, but, you know, South County, South Downstate, that's at some point, you have to, again, more generalize you, you have to realize what are your priorities and how are you going to handle it. So talk about staff, that's avoiding those aging buildings, but, you know, we've had, you know, some opportunities to improve that. And I'm gonna show you some pictures here in a second. Right, I know people are not gonna continue to repeat that at this particular meeting. High property, property value volatility, kind of talk about, tip districts, again, there's just that is the kind of nebulous part of, you know, what's the casino gonna do? Um, you know, convention centers, a possibility, I think I'm gonna talk to a box. Um, you know, convention centers, a possibility, I think I'm gonna talk to a possibility. You know, that's operating, that's additional tax revenue, but what happened with that one wasn't. Just don't operate. Anchor payers would cause a deficit sooner. Talk about the challenges in staff retention. Talk about circuit breakdown. All right, now some positive news. So I just, uh, took some pictures of, uh, some of the projects. Um, this is, uh, new, uh, best of deal for Longfellow with, uh, new secured entry door. Second picture is, uh, the conference room at the high school, um, for, you know, the leadership staff. Next to one of the principal offices. And, uh, I, that's, uh, at the high school. Kind of point out that this is the main entrance. Or room that's, uh, fully utilized at home. And then the, you know, one of the, kind of the second area. And then. Most fun is kind of the floor shows on the auditorium. So you guys will not believe, again, I mean, you had that hard hat to go in there. But how different that auditorium looks right now. And then it's just this big empty shell just waiting for all of the things that we're gonna do. This one's kind of fun. So on your right here, um, and I've got a wall for the construction, and I found. Three of these cylinders. Uh, that turned out to be time capsules from nineteen seventy-six. So, uh, back when it was first, uh, first construction. So, uh, part of the design is going to be, uh, to sort of, uh, reuse those and wait till twenty-seventy-six, so it's all now. That's why they're moving up then. And then again, the, uh, kind of. Back to the, uh, shots of the, uh, auditorium, kind of, and then the, uh, work on the, uh, all of this. So. That is my not-so-short presentation. Um, so. Again, I, it's always, it's always a lot of information, and, but I feel the need to share it, um, because it's important. You know, I don't, I don't want to go over the head with it, that's why I don't do it all the time. But these are kind of important things that we need to kind of be thinking as we. We as a leadership team, um, I know we're gonna do some strategic planning here in a couple of months. Um, we're gonna need to talk about, you know, what, what does it look like with them? You know, are, are we the kind of district that is trying to continue to grow, uh, grow on our successes? Um, and kind of just as crappy language that we are. You know, every little bit, you know, we kind of do a little bit better at a time. Or are we gonna be the kind of district that sort of. Starts to pay? Because we tell many folks that small communities. Are just kind of sitting on the edge. And so, you know, there, if, if it's not this session, it might be another session. Um, there's a hall of bill eleven thirty-six out there that kind of talks about, you know, transfers, you know, see, um. You know, so many, you know, so many percentages that, you know, you have to, uh, you know, withstand. We're not there yet, but. You know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to be an alarmist, but I also want to, you know, make everyone aware that those alarm bells are the link.
Let me just say this. Uh, this is the time that you call in your next week. Don't agree with the different deals. And watch what's going on. There's a terrible deal out there right now. The best thirty-six is not gonna impact us.
That's today, but it's Gary's turn today, and it could be ours tomorrow. So you just pick up the phone, it's a simple thing. Go into the Department of, and you can find, uh, your legislator in your area. And just call him and say, we don't agree with, I don't agree with this. If you want to leave your name, you can, if you don't. But sometimes in numbers, you can impact the change. So, let me just say, thank you, uh, board. Do you all have any questions? Because we can talk more about this at our, uh, re- school board retreat. I know you have to have some questions, but, um. We have another presentation tonight.
Just in the interest of, you know, uh, time, you know, all means, you know, kind of look at the data. Right, if you have any questions, we can sort of address them to group.
Right, we talked about removing the rules, but there are some positives here on report. The things we've got today, but another, uh, curriculum department. And reading, when they talk about the grant, where we get other money, that's how we're able to support teachers, they're learning. I think there's some positive things, uh, from that. So Adrian, can we, uh, give him a round of applause? Every time he learns something. So at this time, we need to ask, you know, this is the best principal of long fellow come forward. Now, we already told Chris, he was over time, Adrian has been over time, how are you doing?
I'm gonna be, just right, it'll be about maybe twenty minutes, something. I will, I won't try to take up too much time. Um, I just find, I want to start off with this picture because I think it's such a good picture of the school. Um, a former student and, um, their, their student went to Longfellow. The dad took these pictures from, um, from his drone, uh, last year, which was a great picture. So, and this is my next favorite picture because look at how pretty these people are. These are the prettiest staff, aren't they? Everybody's so smiley and happy, and that was the day that we wanted to spear the word. Show it off, definitely. So I, uh, I want to introduce my, uh, my leadership team, and the first person is Diane Anderson. She not only works for Longfellow, but she also works for the State of Indiana as an early literacy coach. They actually pay for part of her salary. Uh, she is our reading expert, she is very knowledgeable in best practices. And she's very, she feels that joyful learning is very, very important, and I can't agree more. Uh, she also has about twenty-one years' experience in education. Next, we have Holly Plaman over here, and she is a very organized taskmaster. We can be in a meeting and we can say, you know what we need to do? And she has it done before the meeting is over. You know, why don't we do this? She's got the organized schedule, done. Um, she, I consider her like a sponge too. She's, um, she's got thirteen years' experience in education, but, um, in, in administration, she's still learning. And she takes it all in, she takes it and applies it almost immediately, so she's doing a great job. And next, we have Jody. Um, Ms. Garcia is our dean, I love this picture of her, look how cute she is. She sat in just the right spot, like, I'm like, I, hold, hold still for just a second, Ms. Garcia. Um, she is amazing, she takes this loving and kind approach to discipline and behavior. And the kids want to do the right thing for her. Uh, so she's got some kind of hold on her, she's very consistent. And she's got about nine years' experience in education, so I'm so happy we have her on our team. And that's me. Um, I feel like I take a very loving and joyful approach. This was kind of hard to write because I had to think about myself and how I, how I do things. Um, I, I'll just give you a quick example of loving and joyful. Um, I, I, we give the kids hugs every day, I tell them I love them every day. Um, they say it back, we give hugs. Um, we have small groups going on right now for our I read after school, and I was told one of the groups. They were fooling around, they were playing, so I'm like, that's it, I'm gonna go down there, I'm gonna be stern. Set them straight. I go in there, and I'm like, hey, guys, look, we're not playing, and one girl asked me if she could give me a hug, and another one told me I was pretty. So it was really hard to get anywhere with them. But they, they straightened up, they're good. Um, I feel like I've really been focused on expectation and building a good culture in our building. Uh, I feel like that's really important in order to find student success. So, and I have about thirty years' experience in education, and sixteen of those years are in this district.
So, I've always said, I, this is what I consider my decision maker, this is my compass. So if you look at the wheel, that is our goal, we want students who are happy, healthy, and showing growth academically. Emotionally and physically, I think that's what all of us want, everybody wants, only that. Um, but you have to start at the bottom with the foundation. So my foundation has been safety, and it's number one for me. It is so important that our kids feel safe, our, um, our teachers, our staff, we all have to feel safe in order to get to the top. Um, the frame, I consider that my group and call the crew. That's everybody that's part of getting the kids to where they need to be. It's our curriculum, our culture, our parents, caretakers, and our community. So anytime I have to make a decision, I always kind of refer back to that. So, I was asked to share a little bit of data with you, and this is something that I'm really proud of. When I started back here in twenty-two, twenty-three, I was the instructional coach. And we had about fifty-four percent of our teachers did not have their license, they, they were on emergency permit. Now we are about nineteen percent, we just had a teacher who got her license, um, over a break, so we went from six to five and, um, down to nineteen percent. So I feel like we're doing a really good job. That was a big focus of ours in hiring is to make sure that we, number one, look at fully licensed people. And, um, kind of went from there. The only one that we hired that didn't have a license, she's the one that got licensed. Um, this is not such good news. Um, this is our attendance and our chronically absent students. So you can see in twenty-twenty-three, we were about twenty-five percent, and the state were with about nineteen percent chronically absent. That ended up going up last year to thirty-one percent. And, uh, this data kind of changed something with their, the law of that, and they say if a student misses eighteen or more days, they're considered, or ten percent or more dated to the eighteen day. Sorry, ten percent or more of the school year, eighteen day. Um, then they're considered chronically absent, and that includes excused or unexcused. Uh, after five days now of unexcused absences, we are holding parent meetings. And when, as it increases, we have a lot more action we can take, and I feel like the state is supporting us with that. Um, I want to thank Cindy because she's kind of breaking it all down for us. Uh, some other things that we're doing this year is we've been having parent meetings. We have Jenna Reyes, who is a former student, um, kind of a student, uh, with Bridge, at Target, actually. She's an amazing homeschool liaison, she is, she just has such a big heart for these students. But she's one of the people that's reaching out to these, um, the parents and the students, figure out what's going on, why are you not coming to school? Um, she is making referrals, she makes home visits, um, she's doing referrals to community partners. Um, our communities and schools, which is an outside program that, uh, they actually have somebody in our building who's working with our students. They, the way they get their students, they're working with fifty students in our building, most of them are attendance issues. Um, out of district, we, um, Jen and I know has been meeting with those, uh, parents. Trying to connect them to resources, maybe they don't have transportation, why are you coming late every day? Um, I know she's gone, I gave you that link for freecharitycars.org, so if somebody doesn't have a car or a vehicle, they can go there. If they can contact them, they're pretty much eligible to get a car. Um, we reach out to them with daycare and buffing options, um, sometimes if you can't get your kid to school, uh, on time, or you can't get them here at all. Maybe you need daycare, and the daycare, there are a couple of daycares in our area that do provide transportation. So we're working on a plan, we're hoping that number is gonna go down this year. Kids need to be in school in order to learn. Uh, I read. This was I read three, and, um, I was really proud of this. This was my big goal for last year is I, I wanted our kids to, you know, our I reads force to really go up. Um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we only had about, I don't want to say only, but we had about fifty-three percent passing. And, um, the next year was fifty-two, and then last year we had sixty-two percent passing, so we went up last year by nine point four percent. And I, I'm, I did a great job. And I know, um, Diane, um, again, is our early literacy coach, and we became a part of the state. Early literacy catering cohort two, so on the second cohort in the State of Indiana that is doing this early literacy push. And not only do they provide, um, her Diane Valerie, but they also provide a lot of coaching for her. So she can help coach our teachers, um, in reading instruction. Um, we also have, and I'll show a picture of her in a little bit, um, the state also provides, co-coach. Um, they come to us, and they actually provide training for our teachers. So it, it's been a really good program, I credit that for a lot of that, um, that jump. Uh, we also have explicit finance instruction. Uh, last year we got, it's called Hegarty, and another one was called Ufly, and those were explicit finance instruction in the classroom that Diane was training all the teachers on. Um. I think that's happened a while ago, but I know we've done it the, the years that I've been here, but, um, we're also I read two opt-in. So that means our second graders take the I read three. And if that doesn't, that gives us a chance to look at these students who don't pass. Uh, I think last year we had twelve of our second graders pass. Wherever students don't pass, now we can look at them and see exactly where it is that they're deficient, and we can focus in on those students. So like, right now, I'm, I'm holding I read three tutoring for those students, because I know they, they had trouble on it last year. Um, we also have targeted interventions with, uh, um, our two title teachers. And, um, I've mentioned already, we're doing the tutoring after school. Um, the state's goal is ninety-five percent passing by twenty-twenty-seven. Um, and third, this year, any student who doesn't pass as a third grader, does not pass the I read three, will be retained. So we, we have to get there. Um. My goal is seventy-six percent, I mean, I know it sounds funny, it's like, well, why would you want all one hundred percent to pass? I do, I want all hundred percent to pass. But I have to be reasonable, I have to be realistic, and my goal is for seventy-six percent passing this year, which would still be a jump from where we are now. Um, and a major jump from, you know, last year, so. I learned. So, uh, third grade and fourth grade ELA, and I think that this jump has something to do, so we did increase, it's not enough. Not nearly enough. So we went from, on third grade ELA, from twelve point ten percent passing to twelve point seven percent passing, which was only a point six percent increase. Um. But I, I want you to take a look at the state too, because the state is only at thirty-eight percent passing. So, uh, none of these numbers are good. Um, and the state actually decreased by one percent. Uh, fourth grade, again, um, we were at twelve point four, went to twelve point six percent passing, um, and the state did increase on that one. So for math, it was dismal, it went down. This was, this was probably the worst news I have for you guys today. Um, we went from fourteen percent, uh, provision at Longfellow to ten percent, so that was a decrease of four percent. Um. The state also decreased, but their numbers are a little bit better at fifty percent passing. Um, and then the math, again, we went from fourteen to ten percent, and the state went down a little bit, so. Go to the next slide, I'll just tell you some of the strategies, um, that we're working on for this year. So some of the curriculum strategy, uh, things that, um, not really change, but with new tech, we do still use new tech, project-based learning. Teaching students how to think, not what to think. Uh, we got Great Minds, Witten Wisdom Literacy, it's a high-quality curriculum advisory list from the Department of Education and Ed Report. And Ed Report is a, um, an outside entity that kind of looks at all kinds of different curriculum, and they critique it. They, you know, they use their knowledge as educators to determine if this is good quality education, uh, curriculum. We also this year got illustrative math, illustrative, I'm sorry, did I say it right this time? I say it wrong every time. Uh, that is also rated very highly by Ed Report, and they use it as project-based learning, so it fits very well with our new tech curriculum. Some of the support that we've added for this year, uh, again, we've got the high-quality math and ELA curriculum. Uh, we got, uh, another year with, um, Ms. Anderson, it's extended up to, um, that's been, it was kindergarten through second grade for the early literacy cadre. Uh, kindergarten through second grade, this year was extended to third grade. Uh, we again have Ms. Anderson working with, um, and she, she does work with all of our students. I'm not supposed to say that, but I know she does work with our fourth grade students as well, and teachers. Um. Uh, I-LUN data checkpoints, oh, we've opted in to the I-LUN. And with, they've started this year as a pilot program. So we're actually taking the I-LUN, we've taken it, this, this week, we're taking it our second time, no. Checkpoint two, so we're taking basically the I-LUN all year long, our second time taking it, and it's, it's with certain standards. Just covering certain standards for this checkpoint. And they're giving us multiple opportunities to take it as well, so we've already taken this second checkpoint. And then we work with the kids on wherever we see their, you know, they're struggling, and then we're taking it again. Have we improved, how are we meeting them, where do they need the help? Um, it's a lot of testing, but I think it's gonna be worth it in the end. Targeted interventions, again, with, uh, title people, um, tutoring, we have attendance support from the state. And, um, adult learning, we have a lot of adult learning going on every week, we have different professional developments. We just had one today with new tech, it was, it was a good. We have different professional developments, we just had one today with New Tech, it was a good one, on culture. So, okay, the next one. So these other people, um, I, I wanted to find the best help I could find. Um, and John Purcell is actually, he's with the state of Indiana I E P T A Center. He is a tea, a teacher, uh, teacher assistant specialist. He was a former principal, and he had actually helped create the template for this school improvement plan. Um, and I thought, nobody better to help me with my school improvement plan, because he's going to lead me in the right direction. He joined us, actually, I think he's from Greenwood, Indiana, wasn't it? He's from Greenwood, and I think he came to see us six times this past year, he came for our school improvement meeting. And I was glad he was there, he was kind of a mentor to me for my first year as the principal. Um, he told me it wasn't too late to get out, but I stayed, that he was joking, no, he said it's a, it's a, it's a worthwhile career. So, um, but yeah, he had a big hand in our school improvement plan. Uh, Peggy Henkley, it was kind of, and I, I don't know if I, it was like a God moment, kind of, that she came to our school. She actually co-created the eight-step data-driven program, and it's just a way of looking at student data to figure out where our students need help and meeting them where they are. Um, and it, somehow she ended up coming to our building, everybody in our building outbooked. She did a training for everyone in our building, uh, which would have cost, how much, Dr. Shirley? Ten thousand a day. And she comes every Monday and Friday and volunteers for free in our building, so.
Two thousand and eight, we, everybody here was trained in the eight-step model. And she was one of the, uh, co-
Co-creator.
Creator of the program, so for her to have her in her building as a volunteer is a big deal. It's a big deal.
I was praying to find somebody who could help our students and just, you know, and it was so odd. When I called her, the people who put me in touch with her are actually the people from Beacon Light Church, who also volunteer in our building, and they're like, we know this lady named Peggy Henkley, she wants to come in, uh, to volunteer. Well, I called Peggy, and I was like, well, her name sounds really familiar, when I figured out who she was, I'm like, oh yeah, I hope I can get her. I called her, and she was like, who are you? How did you know I wanted to volunteer? Like, there was, it was a total disconnect, she was not sure what, what I was talking about. And she goes, it's funny, because I've been praying for purpose. So it, it worked out, it was, it was amazing, it was honestly a God moment. Um, so she's been very helpful and, uh, really helping us with the eight-step program. Also, uh, Monica Stare, and this is, uh, Diane Supervisor through the state, she's a training support specialist through cell and the state of Indiana with the early literacy cadre, and again, she's done some trainings with our teachers. Um, she comes in and observes, uh, Diane, I think, once a month, she comes in and has meetings with Diane. She's, Diane has calls with them every week, she has, Diane has data she has to upload to the state every week too. So, um, to make sure that we're doing what they're paying her to do. So, um, Diane's doing a great job. I know that Monica has been bragging on Diane, she's starting to get a little embarrassed during the group meeting, but Diane is doing exactly what she's supposed to be doing, so good job, thank you. Uh, so my school improvement plan, what I did is I, it's forty-eight back and front, forty-eight pages back and front. I didn't want to put one out for everybody, so I did send it to all of you, um, along with the link of this presentation about a half an hour ago. So, um, you should have that already, if you ever want to look at it or you have questions. Perfect, okay. Oh, uh, I keep hearing this from different people, you can't eat enough, that one, one bite at a time, you have to take little bites, you have to just do, yeah, small growth. Um, go ahead and go to the next one. One of the things, when I, I was talking to, uh, John Purcell, I said, I don't, I don't understand how I should make my goal, because I want all of my kids, I want one hundred percent to be doing whatever it is that I want them to do, you know, I don't want just, I don't want to increase it a little bit, he's like, you've got to be realistic. So, I mean, he helped me with that a lot, because like I said, I really struggled with that. I, who do I pick? How do I just pick some of the kids? Um, but he, he's been very helpful. So first, uh, these were my goals from last year, and, uh, they definitely, I'm not going to read them, but like, the first one for the start of the twenty-twenty-four school year, Lake Ridge, Longfellow is going to retain sixteen out of twenty of our teachers. Um, it, it wasn't a good goal, Mr. Purcell's been really good with helping us come up with their goals and the reason for finding those goals, so. So at the beginning of the school improvement plan, you have to come up with, you do a side out analysis, and looking at your strengths, your opportunities, improvements, and your threat. And this, this was kind of fun, because I wanted to look at what's our strength at Longfellow, and I do feel like we, we have a good vibe going on there. We've got a lot of people who really want to do good work. Um, we have a family-type culture between the staff, community, parents, and, um, students, work from home, informed. We, you know, we're always looking at our kids, like, what are they coming to school with, and how can we help them? Um, we now have really good curriculum materials that are approved by the state of Indiana, effective leadership, um, I feel like we're all trying to be very positive. Uh, we have a lot of opportunities, so, um, there's a lot of potential for grant, um, which Cindy takes, because she takes her all the grants. Uh, partnerships, and, and Regan, Regan's like, they got the grants too. Uh, we've got some good partnerships, um, collaborations with both businesses, like I said, we, we work with Beacon Light Church, um, Ross Community, Ross Baptist, um, I'm trying to think, there's, there's other people. Diane's really good at getting all of the donations. Um, we're, we have a lot of professional development opportunities, because our, our staff has a little bit to learn. So we've got, this is the good opportunity. Um, we've got some innovative programs going on, new teaching methods, project-based learning, um, and community engagement, like I said. So there were events, uh, Title One events, like Literacy Night, the talent show, we have Black History Month program, which is coming up, and I'm going to invite you all to that. I will send you all an email for that. Uh, Teacher Misses Coleman, she went to see our Black History Month program, they're always amazing, always. Um, so some things that we need some improvement, and the ones that are highlighted are directly related to what I made my goals for this year. And the first one is students are naturally growth in math and ELA, and teacher turnover, that, that is a threat to, uh, what's going on in our building. I feel like that, if you go to the next one, that is my number one goal. So I, we had to reword it, um, the goal for the start of the twenty-twenty-five school year, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six. Longfellow will retain the most effective teachers and determine, and measured by effective while highly effective on the rise evaluation. So some of our training, we want to keep these people, they have institutional knowledge of how things are going. Uh, we, we don't want to like reteach these people how to operate in our building, what is our culture, what are our processes, and what are, how do we operate? Um, once you've learned it, you don't want to have to reteach a whole new group of people every year. So some of our strategies for keeping our best teachers is ongoing and rigorous adult learning, lots of support, modeling, coaching, efficient ongoing, and so on. Um, I, I feel like we've got a really good, um, group that, um, if we can keep them, then I think we'll, we'll be on the right track, and we can start showing some growth. Uh, we also, I want to mention, we have a committee come around, and that's all the Sunshine Committee, and they do great things all year, so Diane started that. So my other two goals, um, are related to test scores, and we had to focus in on just one group of students, and that is our third grade English Language Arts student. Um, I'm hoping, again, remember small bite, um, I'm hoping we can increase by five percent, so that seventeen point seven percent of our students are proficient on the, um, third grade ELA. So on the right-hand side, we needed to look ahead. Uh, so that would be the following year, I would expect a fifteen percent increase over this year's, last year's scores, and the next year, I would want a twenty-five percent increase over last year's scores. So, um, I'm hoping by the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we can get thirty-seven percent of our students proficient on the ELA. And then the math, um, I'm hoping that we can have a five percent increase again, and we'd be at fifteen percent proficient. And then by twenty-six, twenty-seven, we'd be at thirty-five percent proficient on the math ELA, or the math, uh, I-Lern. So some of the strategies that we're using are systemic evaluation of tier-one instruction, that we're constantly looking at how people are instructing. We want to make sure people are using the best practices. Um, creating a curriculum map, map aligned to the Indiana academic standards, so looking at the curriculum that we just acquired, and how does it match up against what the state wants, and when are we teaching those things? So it's a map for our teachers to know where to go and when to go there. Um, targeted investments, measure student learning through the instructional process. Uh, we just got DIBELS, and DIBELS is, it's an assessment that we can give to students for ELA, and, um, if they're ready, we have to test them again in two weeks, but we have to give them interventions in between to give their improving. So this is going to help us show a lot of growth with our, um, with our students. And develop sports and interventions through the MTSS structure and the eight-step process, so looking at their data all the time, seeing where they're going. So, um, this was not a goal that I put in the school improvement plan, but I really, and I, I want there to be joy and love and learning. So I want kids to be at school and to be happy, so if you go to the next one. Um, I just kind of want to point out some of the pictures that are here, I love this girl on the left. She's the, she's got the best smile, uh, but that was, uh, um, field day, there's a lot of field days, that was the best, some kids said it was the best day of their life. This is field day, field day. Um, this is the fourth grade, um, that's the fourth grade dance, they had a, um, glow dance, a glow party. Uh, grandparents' day this year, Wanda at Park, but that Taylor Wanda is our PTO president, and, oh my gosh, everybody came. Everybody was there, Louise was there, yes. Um, that is Dr. Shirley with one of our students, that was the day we had, um, the high schoolers come over, and the high school football team, the cheerleaders, and they cheered our students in. Um, that is the author, they, these are the, these are the things that you're not going to remember. How many of you remember sitting at a desk when you were in school and doing a worksheet? Nobody. You want, these are going to be core memories for these kids, this is stuff that they will never forget. This was our literacy night this year, uh, we had an author come, and he signed books and gave away books to our students. These two cracked me up, they said they were twins for twin day, um, because they have the same last. I love it. Um, okay, go to the next one, we've got, we've got one. So these are our volunteers from Beacon Light Church, here and here, they run, um, chess club and crochet club after school. And, um, they give awards, they invite parents to come in, and they do a ceremony, it works out really nice. Um, this is, so Mr. Keith is our maintenance guy at, at school. And, um, last year, we just so happened to figure out it was birthday, it was his birthday in the middle of the day. So, um, all the kids in the entire school made cards for him, and about two-thirty, I called Mr. Keith to a room on the other end of the building, that there was a clog in the toilet. And he came over with this big thing to clean out the clog, and he was like, is it so rude to get me down the hall? It was, all the kids were, it made you cry, it was such a joy, it's more, those kids were so happy too, and it was good practice for them to ride a car, it had the purpose, you're giving it to somebody. Um, but then it felt good in the heart too, so it was a great day. Um, Jenna Reyes, I want to talk about her again, last year she started, um, doing haircuts. Um, she's got some good friends that do haircuts, and she did haircuts before picture day. This year, um, she had over seventy kids who requested haircuts, and it took several days to get it all done. She did it right before Christmas, right, or winter break, um, so that kids could have nice hair for, for Christmas. Um, this picture here is actually, um, Dan's grandson, Ryland, and, um, he was a kindergarten, he was a kindergarten owner this year. So last year I started with, um, t-shirts that say County Met High School class of, this is twenty thirty-seven. So our kindergarten owners this year will graduate from County Met for twenty thirty-seven. But I do that because it's kind of a marketing tool, like, if you got the shirt, it's the same size, it's a mid, adult mediums, and you've got to wear it every year on the first day of school, before you go to school, and I want parents to see the progression of what they're going to look like. When you're in sixth grade, you've got to put that shirt on, and how many kids are going to be too, too big for that shirt when you're in high school? So, um, we thanked our bus drivers last year, because, um, I think that's the hardest job in education. I would probably do anything over being a bus driver. I think they have the hardest job. Uh, and then those are our new desks and chairs, so, uh, we got two different sizes, um, one set for kindergarten and first grade, and another set for the grades that are over. And then from one, the, 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 the rock mine, yep. Um, these are just the, I think these are the champion, that's the girl I was telling you about. Look at her smile, it's the best smile, look at this, there's Avoli. It's just the, this smile, and it's, um, that's why we do what we do, because we just want kids to enjoy being at school. It's going to help attendance, it's going to help their growth, if they enjoy being themselves. That was it, I'll hand for you.
Feel the passion, and so that's what it's all about. Couple things I want to just highlight, um, you all know when COVID came, we lost a large amount of our staff. And it almost came down to taking warm bodies just to have somebody here. But through our curriculum department, our Title One grants and money, we were able to put on our own university, and you'll hear more about that in the curriculum report. But that was to make sure that our teachers were qualified, and what you said was important, we really don't want to lose them. And that goes all the way back to what Adrian was saying, in order to keep, see, we keep training people. We started off with the New Tech model, uh, in two thousand, what, six, seven? And all those people that we train, we spend millions of dollars getting people trained, groups of them went to other districts. So here we go, we have to start all over training again, and so that gets old, you're spending good money that goes to bad. And so making sure that our people are educated and passing that test for license, and trying to hold on to them, and, and that also includes a good learning environment, people want to work where they feel happy. And so you're doing a good job with that. I think we're, the retention of teachers is slowing down, and we're beginning to keep them, but it all comes down to money, you know that. So I just want to tell you all, I'm proud of you, and, uh, when people say we are not increasing our test scores, they got to hear the data. It's not that we're not increasing, maybe not at the magnitude, but when you see the state not increasing, it tells you where we are, we lost a lot during COVID, a lot, and we're just getting kids where they can sit down. And so all the support systems you have in place, that makes a world of difference. You heard from the high school at our last board meeting, you've heard the middle school. So you can see the passion in all of the schools and how that continuity, if, if we keep doing what we're doing, and you will hear in this next report, not tonight, all the programs that we have in place, the professional development that we send, that you approve, that's what's making a difference. We are intentional about where our people go. We have a model that is helping us to stay on track. So, uh, I am really proud of the work that the staff is doing to get our kids where they go, and making sure that our parents are a part of that, so they have to feel supported. And so we're trying to improve on that, and so we're looking at other avenues, how do we get parents really into the schools? We want our schools to be inviting, so, um, I, I thank you, let's give them one more round of applause. Madam President, can we move into superintendent's or school board report?
Yes, we can go ahead and move into the superintendent.
Uh, we always talk about our goal areas, and now what you have is finance and curriculum and, uh, what's going on in the schools, you can relate to these goals. Academic, all learners will continuously demonstrate academic growth. Goal area two, safety, we will provide a safe and secure learning environment for all. Equity, we will provide a positive, inclusive, and equitable environment for all. Goal area four, communication, we will improve communication and strengthen relationships both internally and externally. And goal area five, finances, we will advocate to increase the financial resources of the corporation to provide an outstanding school environment and opportunities for our students, staff, and community. Starting with professional development, we recommend Cynthia Trevino, Diane Anderson, Erin Gomez, Rachel Niemann, Lindsay Keen, Melissa Klon, Kyle Stevens, Chris Bak, Bakovic, and Melissa, did he hear me? Mess up his name. And Melissa Reddick to attend the New Tech Network, N T N Leadership Summit on February twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh in New Orleans, uh, with expenses paid from Title II A Fund. We recommend Dr. Shirley attend the Indiana Association of Public Superintendents twenty-twenty-five Winter Seminar on January- We recommend Dr. Shirley attend the Indiana Association of Public Superintendents twenty-twenty-five Winter Seminar on January twenty-third in Indianapolis with expenses paid from Title II A Fund. Recommend approving the professional development items.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Miss Lee, can I have a second? Second by Mr. Buckley, any questions or comments?
Comment, we got the, uh, for me to go to that, we got it late, so, uh, that's why it's after the fact.
Okay, any more questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four yays, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Leaves resignation and employment, all new employment to Lake Ridge New Tech schools is contingent upon a cleared expanded criminal history background check within thirty days and a cleared expanded child protection index check within sixty days of effective date. Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-six dash two dash one point five and Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-six dash two dash one point three. We recommend sadly, accepting Jessica Gibbs' resignation from the deputy treasurer position at Lake Ridge New Tech Middle School, effective January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. We recommend accepting Angelina Hicks' resignation from the instructional aid position at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School, effective January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. We recommend accepting Sarah Sanchez's resignation from the student supervisor position at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School, effective January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. And we recommend accepting Jelanda Balintin's resignation from the student supervisor position at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School, effective January fourteen, twenty twenty-five. We recommend Stacy Torres be employed as a head start building aide, effective January twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Recommend approval of the leaves resignation and employment items.
May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Buckley, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Lee's, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Four yays, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, our new business, we recommend the Board of Finance approve the active depositories for the district. We recommend approving the twenty-twenty-five property, auto, liability, E N O, and law enforcement insurance. We recommend approving the following donation at Calumet New Tech High School. January tenth, twenty twenty-five, cash donation, two hundred dollars from Jessica Shutin, donors to the SWIM account. We recommend approving the following fundraiser at Calumet New Tech High School. January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to February fourteen, twenty twenty-five, Krispy Kreme sales for the senior class. We recommend approving the following fundraisers at Lake Ridge New Tech Middle School. January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five to February tenth, twenty twenty-five, candle sales for the student council account. February tenth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, candygram sales for the student council account. We recommend approving the attached donation made to the Lake Ridge Schools Visual and Performing Arts Program for December twenty twenty-four and January twenty twenty-five via event link. Recommend approval of the new business items.
May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Buckley, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Lee's.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So, tonight, we're going to start with Maggie. I think I have everything right this time. I think so. He's an Adrian.
Well, thank you for coming out tonight, um, thanks to our runners on the information. Thank you for the, um, students who will expand, um, on the different issues. Uh, always thank you, creative donors, you help all of our programs, yeah, we truly appreciate it. So, there, I'm just going, do you have anything to say?
Let's get my money. Well, first, I'd like to thank these first, but it's a little bit fun. Talking about all the financing that's involved in these, these situations. Also, I'd like to thank Melissa and her group for coming out and putting out the presentation. You know, that, that, that youngest students are probably affected by the COVID pandemic, so they got a lot of attention out too, but it's nice, it's an opportunity to make things better. Thank you for the stuff I'm hearing. And I'd also like to thank, thank Diane for, really. Have a good night, enjoy the warm weather.
Thank you.
I promise I will be careful. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, joining us this evening, and yes, for sitting through my, uh, my plan, it's been some finance. I know that it's a lot of numbers, but I think it's important that's, you know, not only for the community at large, you know, we're aware of where the district sits. Um, my heart is really heavy for a couple reasons tonight. Um, one, um, it's on the board agenda, we're losing that Jessica Gibbs, our deputy treasurer. Um, her joyousness or laughter, uh, you know, in, in our business office was, you know, a great source, you know, the lightning move in the office some days, and that's going to be, you know, sorely missed, um, as long as, you know, the divisions are all, are part of a work and dedication, so, uh, we got the big shoes to fill. Um, secondly, um, prayers to the Thomas family. Um, I got the call from, uh, James Townsend, uh, you know, the other day, uh, we were having one meeting, and I was just absolutely devastated. And, um, Barb, Thomas was a valued member, not only the central office staff and family of the Lake Ridge family. Um, I walk these hallways, uh, I see her presence, uh, you know, through the decorations, the pride she put in her work, um, the mom, the mama bear attitude she had towards us, um, you know, um, as far as taking care of us. And so I just, I absolutely, all, all of my love and prayers, uh, to, to her family. Um, and also the prayers to Mr. Deal and his family, um, they need to deal with, with, uh, those, those issues. Um, thank you, everyone, um, and the, uh, positivity.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Diane, Melissa, Sherri.
I also want to give my condolences to, um, our family. It's been hard on us, Regan and I were here every night with Barb for so much years now. Um, she didn't like it. Yeah, she didn't like it. But at the same time, I mean, she took care of, right, but she took care of us, and she looked like our mom here, you know, and I was just so, and just so, it just doesn't feel real, because I can't tell you, I'm just, you know, over the last few days, I'm like, oh, Barb's gonna, and then I'm like, God, I think. I can only imagine, I know how hard it is on us, and I told you. Always, so I just wanted to, my love and prayers and condolences to the family. Um, although, and my prayers to Mr. Deal, our team recovering. And my shout out to Jessica for her years of service here at Lake Ridge, and, 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 and all the support she has.
Thank you, Dr. Shirley.
Barb has been with me since Hossford Park when I was a principal. And she came and she left, and I brought her back. And she told me then, I've grown up, I'm ready to work. And she didn't let us down. Her handprints are over this whole building. We're having a hard time today, it was a funeral here. Losing Jessica and losing Barb, even though they were different ways of a loss, we felt it as if everybody had just died today. We made it through today, it was really hard. I mean, everybody was doom and gloom. So we have to focus on the positives because Barb gave us something to laugh, talk about. It was her building, and not just our side, the whole building, the lady decorated. That's just one part of it. She treated this building as if it was her home. She would tell us, you know, you, you, did you leave that dirty dish in that sink? Can't do that. It is so many precious moments up until the time that, we saw her the day before she died. And it, we're hurting, we are hurting. Kelly, we know that's your sister-in-law, and so we want to extend that because I got to tell you, she loved you. I know that, we talked about that, so I know that to be a fact. Jessica is going to truly be missed, you know, it's something about, and I'm going to hurry up, when people that are good workers, and not only that, they're part of a family atmosphere. It's different when you have a person that come to work, do not do their work, and you really want them to go. We gave Jessica cards that say, stay, we gave her prayer cards, please stay, you know? But it was time for her to move on for her own good. So, uh, we wish her the best in her new endeavors. Uh, Mr. Deal, we got a report today. He's not out of the woods, so we're going to still need those prayer warriors. He's, he's stable, let's put it like that. And we'll get a, a report daily. And he wanted you all to know that because he, he called me before he went in on Thursday. And he wanted everybody to know that he was going in on Friday. This was a serious, uh, operation. And so it's going to take a long time for healing, so we need to keep his daughter and family lifted in whatever way you can, because they are going to need it. This is a, a strong-willed man, however, it's going to take a lot to bring him back. So let's, let's get the word, pray, and do what we have to do. Uh, Melissa and your team, we, we still praise you, you did an excellent job, and, and we know that to be true, not just words, that the work is being done, so kudos to you and your staff. And one thing you did mention is how you celebrate success. For example, with your kids, sending them off in limos because they achieved. You do a lot of things like that, it's those little things, huh?
Dance parties.
Yeah, yeah, so it's those little things that make a difference in somebody's life. They will remember that for the rest of their lives, so thank you for doing that. Uh, we're getting to the end of this month. This was, uh, appreciation for the school board, we, and we have a new member, we appreciate you. And hopefully you will enjoy your tenure here. And you see the good things that are going on, we just want to keep that going, so we thank you. And I appreciate all of you from the bottom of my heart, I am just grateful. And I want all of you to just stay strong. Um, Barb's memorial is on Thursday, it starts at three, and that goes to five-thirty. And then after that, there is a service. Okay, so you have it, plan accordingly. All right, thank you.
And I would kind of close by saying, uh, thank you for your presentation. Melissa, thank you for your presentation. Um, the last time we have a board meeting, I walk in and I stop Barb, and I, every time I come in, I'm like, hey Barb, how's it going? So, it's still like, yeah, how are you? So we've been doing that since twenty fifteen. When I walked in the building today, I started crying, because it's not the same building, the life is fine out of this building. Um, Barb was a true gem, I'm glad I got to know her. Um, I hope everybody has a baby, and I just can't really think of anything else to say. Kelly, prayers to you and your family. I know she did, she, she just was an amazing person, and, uh, I had no idea. I found out actually if it had started moving last Thursday. It was kind of a shock, but again, prayers for your family. With, um, with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Buckley, motion, may I have a second? Second by Miss Lee, this evening is adjourned, have a great evening, everyone.